It's 5:30 PM and I will call to order the March 26, 2018 meeting of the MISD Board of Trustees. Thank you all for coming, welcome. Our first agenda item, as always, will be a moment of silence followed by a pledge to the United States flag and the Texas flag. Before we begin our moment of silence however, I'd like to introduce you to the student who will be leading us in those pledges, and that is Midland High School sophomore Karen Garcia. Karen is a cadet in the Midland High Air Force Junior ROTC. Karen serves in vital roles for the Junior ROTC as a member of the Honor Guard Drill Team and Exhibition Armed Drill Teams. She is specifically responsible for scheduling the Honor Guard, coordinating events throughout the region. After graduating high school, Karen plans on attending the Registered Nurse Program at Midland College and then attend Angelo State University to obtain her Bachelor's Degree in Nursing. Thank you Cadet Garcia, and we will call upon you after the moment of silence, thank you. You will please join me now. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Cadet Garcia, we appreciate your service very much. Alright, our second agenda item, presentations, recognitions, award announcements. Two A's, Board Member Appreciation Projects. Mr. Jones?
Good evening Board Members. During the month of January, I believe January is the designated month for Board Appreciation, all of our campuses held some type of a project, service project, at their campuses. So tonight, we invited seven of our campuses to kind of share briefly their project name, what the project entailed, and more specifically, who the project was in honor of. And so we're going to honor each of you tonight, and each campus will be able to share out the details of their service project held at their campuses. First, we're going to have Charlotte Butler come up from Scarborough.
Butler, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Scarborough Elementary honored our board member, Mr. Rick Davis. Our service project was to the Midland Animal Shelter. Our counselor chose this project because of the universal love of animals. She also felt that it was a project that all students could participate in, no matter what walk of life they came from, and I thought that was a great idea on her part. So, the children donated, in many cases, brand-new items, dog beds and dog food, but also they could bring things like used towels, or newspapers, or blankets. The generosity was overwhelming. The team from the animal shelter came to pick up the items, and they didn't have enough vehicles to put them all in. So they actually had to go back, get another truck or two, and come back and get them. They were excited. Evidently, this is not a group that maybe many times has been the recipient of such generosity, so I brought you the thank you note.
Oh, thank you.
Next, we have the principal from Goddard, Shelley Haney.
Good evening. Goddard Junior High did our service project in honor of Karen Nicholson. We, last year, just a little history, last year, 2017, we lost a longtime Goddard counselor, Amy Allen, to lymphoma, and so last year, that organization became even more near and dear to our heart. So, this spring, when my student council and teen leadership classes started working on their spring service project, they immediately went towards that direction again. So, over a three-week period in February, my teen leadership and student council organized various fundraisers. We did the coin drive that's typical for the Pennies for Patients program. We also did a student-teacher basketball game where the students could pay to go and watch the game during the school day, and a free dress day where they could wear lime green top, which is the color for that organization, with jeans. And, all of these efforts were totally student-driven and supervised by my sponsors for those two groups, and I'm really proud to say that they raised over $6,500 for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, so that's what we did.
Next, we have Washington, Principal Benay Newton.
Good evening. At Washington, to honor our school board trustee, Mr. Fuller, we decided to work with Mission Agape because we work with them routinely during the year, and they fight food insecurity throughout the Permian Basin. And so the two programs that you might know about are the Weekend Backpack Program that they do for kids, and then also they have a food pantry that's open to families with referrals. And so, we, our project was called Fill It Up for Fuller, and we had a 100-gallon metal container that the kids brought food and put in, and so they got quite a kick out of that because it was pretty big, you know? And at first, they'd go and peer in and see one or two cans and go, "Ooh!", so they really started bringing lots of stuff, and we ended up actually filling it up twice. So, it was very exciting, and we had it in the front hall, and they really got a kick out of it, and then, of course, when they came to pick it up, they were thrilled to get that much food. So, we really appreciate the work you do, Mr. Fuller, for the community and for our schools.
Representing Bowie, Principal Melissa Horner.
Good evening Board. Bowie had to do something that tied to, or we chose to do something that tied to the fine arts. We did a recycling repurpose drive where we collected water bottles, and then we turned those water bottles into a Chuhuli-inspired art project, similar to the chandelier in the lobby, and we did that for, in honor of Mr. Kennedy, and that will be displayed at the Centennial Library, and we are currently working to schedule that display. So that is what we chose to do. We collected over 117 gigantic bags of water bottles and used over 3,000 in the sculpture, and it is quite impressive, so thank you.
Principal from Vaskin, Lena Baiza.
Good evening. Our Board of Trustees representative is Brian Murray. Although there are many great community projects to take part in, we wanted a project that was near and dear to Mr. Murray's heart. We knew Mr. Murray's mother had passed away from pancreatic cancer almost a year ago. We selected to have Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Week. We wanted to bring an awareness to this type of cancer and also have students and staff raise funds to donate to the American Cancer Society. We set out to raise awareness to our school community mostly through social media. Our school/PTA Facebook page has over 700 followers, so we knew we could use this as an outlet. Students received information daily via announcements and during PE. Every day, we had a theme and a message about pancreatic cancer. For example, "Let's Band Together to Fight Cancer", where each student received a purple bracelet to show support and hope for a cure. Going Purple for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness, where students and staff members wore purple to show support for those affected with pancreatic cancer. As you can tell, pancreatic cancer awareness is represented by the color purple. Fundraising took place throughout the week. We had Fight for the Cure collection tubs for each classroom. Students were encouraged to bring change to fill the tub. We also sold jean passes to teachers, that's always a huge hit, and we culminated with Hats Off to Cancer Research Day, where students paid a dollar for a hat pass. In the end, a donation was made to the American Cancer Society for $1,132.13 in memory of Sandra Murray. Mr. Murray was there for the check presentation. What we learned from this project is that pancreatic cancer is one of the few cancers for which survival has not improved substantially over nearly 40 years. Studies show that death rates for pancreatic cancer are increasing, while for most other cancers, they are declining. Yet pancreatic cancer has been underfunded for decades and receives less than 2% of overall cancer research funding, so there's definitely some work to be done. We were very grateful for the opportunity to involve our students in this project and to educate them as well about the role of a school board member and how important that is. Thank you so much.
Principal from Jones, Lisa LaClere.
On behalf of our school board member, Mr. Bishop, we held two no-uniform fundraiser events. Students brought $2 per event to have a free dress day. We raised over $1,000. All of the money raised will go to students and families needing lunch money assistance. A really neat experience from this fundraiser was that we had three different parents make large donations to our cafeteria. In order to help with cafeteria balances, we were able to credit cafeteria accounts right away, helping families that were struggling. The money raised and donated was a true blessing to our students on our campus. Jones Elementary wants to thank Mr. Bishop for all he does for our schools. It was truly an honor to do this in your name.
Principal of Dezavala, Julie Sims.
In order to honor Mr. Marquez and his hard work supporting our MISD students, Dezavala Elementary participated in a food drive to support the Midland Soup Kitchen Ministry. We collected over 1,200 cans of food to honor your service. The Midland Soup Kitchen, we chose them because they support, they are right behind Dezavala in our neighborhood, and they support the students and parents of our community, and we wanted to honor you for supporting us as well. And you can see the pictures on the Midland Soup Kitchen Ministry Facebook page. Thank you.
Small token of our appreciation to each and every one of you, Board of Trustees, and it's a good service project for our kiddos in Midland. Thank you for what you do every day.
I'd just like to say, we've gotten presents, we've gotten cards, we've gotten posters, but this was absolutely the best thing that's ever been done for us for Appreciation Week or Day or Month or whatever it was, so thank you very much. It was really just an outstanding thing for y'all to do.
Yes, thank you very much. That's exactly what I was gonna say, thank you. It was, they've all been great, but this is by far the best, and thanks to the campuses and the students and for all the effort that went into it, thank you very much. We definitely feel appreciated, thank you. Alright, next, public forum. We have three signed up. For those of you that may be new speakers, we limit you to three minutes, and if you're here to discuss an item that's not an agenda item, then we are not permitted to discuss it among ourselves because it's not been posted, but we can ask questions if we have any of you. I'll call on the first one, Mr. Chris Gafford. He knows all about the rules, and he's here to talk about banning of Dixie and waste of funds.
Yeah, thank you, and I agree. It's a great way to, the community service stuff is an excellent deal, and I appreciate that. This is my seventh trip here to talk to y'all about this. Seven times I've gone first. Usually, Mr. McAfee is here to rebut whatever I say, that's fine. My message isn't dependent upon what he says, my message is the same. Just to set the table, of course, back in August of last year, Mr. Van Hooser made the decision over there at Lee, the band couldn't play Dixie anymore, for safety of the students. Of course, my belief is that's about political correctness, but I got some numbers I want to run by y'all. Two school shootings recently, 17 dead in Florida, one dead in Maryland, zero kids saved by political correctness or getting rid of Dixie. $20,700, I'm sure that's a number y'all are familiar with, that's what we spent on a survey recently. What's important about that is $50,000 is the average police salary in the state of Texas. So that $20,000 could have gone towards 40% of a new security officer's salary, or that $20,000 could have gone towards some extra training for guidance counselors to recognize mental health issues, which is, aside from the use of a gun, what's present in every one of these school shootings. Maybe that money could have gone to some firearm training for our teachers, so we could start protecting our kids. Instead, we do things like ban songs, which is no better of an idea than the guy in Pennsylvania that wants to arm the students with rocks. 14%, Central Administration at MISD makes 14% more than the state average. Infinity is a number of things we could do with that money, other than push political correctness. So we have one song banned in the name of safety, one person did that, Principal Van Hooser, one person approved it and backed it up, Superintendent Riddick, seven people who continue that decision instead of putting their focus somewhere else, and that's the school board. So again, $20,000, $20,700 we're using on a survey, instead of putting it towards our kids' safety and security, which is obviously number one right now. My kids, their kids, the kids they teach, the kids they have at home. So the last numbers, I have one student in MISD for three more years. After that, I'll have no more kids going to MISD, I'll have no more friends and family sending their kids to MISD if at all possible, because it's out of control. The political correctness has to stop, we have to do things that matter, quit wasting the money, quit coming up with these off-the-wall, "Hey, let's get rid of Dixie because that's safe", and let's do something, let's make something happen. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Gafford. Next up, Becky Page regarding the state of PTA. Ms. Page, welcome.
Good evening, I thought I had four minutes, so I may have to cut some of this short. I'm Becky Page, I'm the council president for our school district's PTAs. Because we value the partnership between the superintendent, community, and PTA, and count on your continued support, I want to give you a brief update on important work and training that has and is occurring to ensure a strong PTA presence in this district. Midland ISD has 38 schools, 37 of which have a PTA. Our PTA membership in MISD is very strong this year, with 5,721 total members among our 37 PTAs. This year, Texas PTA challenged all PTAs to grow their membership by at least 5%. I'm proud to say that not only did Midland PTAs meet that challenge, they surpassed it. 54% of our PTAs met or surpassed the 5% growth challenge, helping all of Midland to increase by 10%. This year's numbers are the highest since the 1314 school year. I hope that each of you have joined at least one of our PTAs here in Midland, next year, which will be here sooner than we think. I again invite each of you to join one, or two, or more PTAs to help join our, to help keep our PTA strong, as well as encouraging every employee in the district to join. With over 26,000 students in MISD, there's no reason at all why we couldn't have twice the number of members that we have today. Education is the highest priority for PTA, and included in this is the education of our PT officers and parents. We held three events this year, offering training for PTA officers, including a workshop to help with budgets and bylaws. We will host one more training event this spring for new officers and those who may wish to know a little bit more about what they may have signed up for next year. I also had the honor of speaking to all of our principals at an A-Team meeting to give them more information regarding a principal's role on a PTA board. We also had some exciting speakers at our lunch meetings this year, educating our council members on a variety of subjects. 529 Accounts for Funding Higher Education, Staying Free from Distracted Driving Through the Safe2Save App, Literacy Nights with the Adventures of Willie Millie and Thumper, Dual Credit and the Legacy Scholarship through Midland College, and Midland Fire Department's CRAZE, which stands for Civilian Response to Armed Shooter Events. This is a free program that we will be hosting as a community engagement event for our parents and community on April 10th at First United Methodist Church. Our local PTAs have done so many wonderful things this year, from holding carnivals to engage the community, hosting STEM nights and literacy nights, paying for field trips for students, bringing outside programs to the students on their campuses, to purchasing much-needed items for our schools and teachers. Not to toot our own horns, but an active and engaged PTA can quite often be the difference between an average school and an exciting school. We have some outstanding PTAs in Midland making a clear difference on their campuses, including some of those PTAs who struggle to find members and volunteers. And while many think of PTA as purely a fundraising machine, and yes, fundraising is necessary to do what we have to do, PTA is mostly about advocacy. And just in case you weren't aware, I want to give you a quick update as to what your state PTA accomplished with our lawmakers over the past few years. They secured legislation to strengthen cyberbullying laws, decriminalize truancy, protect the records of juvenile offenders, banned the sale of e-cigarettes to minors, strengthened school turnaround laws ensuring parent participation earlier in the process, and above all, defeated all voucher program legislation. We've had a great school year, we look forward to yet another next year, working together for the good of what's most important, which is our students. Please know that we are here to support you, and please do not hesitate to ever call us when you need PTA's help as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page, appreciate it. Alright, next, our final speaker is Jennifer Langford. She's gonna speak to us about background checks for MISD. Ms. Langford, welcome.
Thank you, good to see all of you. I'm familiar with a lot of you. My name is Jennifer Langford. I've been involved in MISD for 14 years now, I've had several students in MISD and still have several in MISD. I've been involved with campuses across the school district, as well as on the city PTA for the last nine years, and needless to say, I love our schools, I love our students, I want to make sure that our students get the best education possible, and I want to make sure that they do so in the safest environment possible. On February 20th, Tuesday of this year, a crossing guard was arrested at Great House Elementary. I know this, not because the communication from the school, but because it happened at the end of the school day in front of parents and students. As you can imagine, I was concerned. Then, when the information was finally sent to the parents on Friday at the end of the school day, we learned that the worst possible scenario of the arrest was for aggravated sexual assault, sexual assault of a child. As you can imagine, that's when I get the sick feeling in my stomach, as I realize that my 11-year-old daughter has walked by this individual two times a day for the last year and a half. Needless to say, I'm concerned. At that time, I reached out to our principal, to our school board representative, and to our superintendent with some of my concerns. First, I asked, "Why did it take so long for the information to find its way to the parents? Why did we have to wait till Friday to have any clarification of why the crossing guard was arrested?" Second, I asked, "Please tell me that this individual that I entrusted my child to, as well as other parents, had a background check done." The principal responded first with an email stating that she responded as quickly as she could to the email, and that she had no knowledge of if a background check had been done or not because it is a City of Midland employee. It's not okay with me. Then I spoke with our school board representative on the phone, and he was assisting, trying to help find out the answers to my questions as well. From our superintendent, I heard nothing. My questions are these. Are we okay with not knowing if the individuals that work directly with our youngest students are safe? Would you be surprised to learn that this individual actually does have prior convictions, not for sexual assault, but for weapons and for driving under the influence on his background check? Are we okay continuing to point the finger to the City of Midland and say that it is their problem and not ours to make sure that our children are safe? I have heard Mr. Riddick say many times, "No adult convenience over children's safety or learning." Did we practice this in this situation? This is our school district, all of ours, this community's school district. It is time for us to come together as a school board, as administration, as teachers, as parents, and as a community, and to help make sure our students are safe. It is time for us to have open communication, it is time for us to stop pointing blame, it is time for us to sit down and have a conversation and come up with a plan on how we can do our very best to make sure that our students are in the safest situations possible. I have a background check done every year as a volunteer on my children's campuses, every year. Please tell me why we cannot make sure the individuals that work with our children on our campuses, whether they are City of Midland employees or school district employees, do not have background checks done every year by our school district. I challenge each of us to work together, parents, the City of Midland, and the school district, to come up with a way to do background checks and make sure that the individuals that work with our kids are truly safe to work with our kids. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Langford. Alright. Turning now to Agenda Item 4, the Consent Agenda. 4A, Class Size Waivers, the information's on page nine of our packet. 4B, Financials, on page 11. 4C, Amendments and Transfers, page 24. Monthly Expenditures, page 29. 4E, RFP before, or? 4F, RFP 1804 Kitchen Equipment Repair, page 66. 4G, West Texas Food Service, page 68. 4H, Instructional Materials Allotment Antique Certification, page 74. 4I, Personnel Appointments, page 76. 4J, Board Meeting Minutes, page 80. And 4K, Board Gifts, page 87. Board Members, are there any of those consent agenda items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion or any other reason at this time? Alright, hearing none, then all those items will be deemed approved by consent. Turning now to our district reports. Agenda Item 5, 5A, Board Goals. On page 88 begins the information on our Goal Progress Measure 2.4. Ms. Rivera?
Good evening Board.
Good evening.
I really like seeing all those service projects in your honor, I think that's a really special thing that I hope we continue to do. I think that's a great way to honor you guys for all your work, on behalf of all of us. Tonight's really a short report, simply because 2.4, we don't have the data collected yet, but it does go along with Goal 2, which is measuring, you know, our 3 through 8 students passing both reading and math star. And this Goal Progress Measure will be using iStation and Imagine Math. Because iStation is being re-implemented in junior high and Imagine Math is being implemented in grades 3 through 8, we just don't have the data yet to report. According to the monitoring calendar though, this is a March annual report, so at the end of this year, when we have all of our data, this will be an ongoing March report. So if you'll see in this slide, what we did was, since this Goal Progress Measure is measuring Goal 2, which is star performance, what we have at this point is basically where we performed last year, and then where our targets are, and just so that you know, the end of this year's data, end of your school year 1718, we'll actually be reporting that data to you guys in August. When we collect that data though, we're gonna have to come back and do some work to actually set the annual targets, because if you remember, right now in 2.4, it's from X to Y by Z, simply because we don't have the numbers yet. So I just wanna make sure you understand this is 2.4, the only reason- So I just want to make sure you understand this is 2.4. The only reason we're not reporting data is because we don't have any of your data yet. But that will be reported in August, and then annually in March.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, next, 5B, Update on the New State Accountability System. Information begins on page 92 of our Board Packet.
Good evening, Board Members. I'm here to provide you with a quick update on our new accountability system at the state level. The 85th Texas Legislature passed House Bill 22 establishing a new state accountability system for measuring the academic performance of districts and campuses. The new system is comprised of three different domains: student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps. TEA is currently in the process of finalizing these rules as we speak. And at the next three, or counting today, and then the next two scheduled board meetings, I will be continuing to give you updates on each of the domains. So for today, I'm going to be providing just a general overview of the new system, along with specific information about the student achievement domain, the first domain. So for this first year of implementation, as a district, we will receive A through F ratings. So we will get either an A, B, C, D, or F rating. Campuses, though, will only receive either MET standard or improvement required rating this first year, and will start to receive A through F ratings beginning August of 2019. If you go back to our tax days when we had our previous accountability system, the rating definitions are very similar to what we used to have prior to 2011. What TEA is saying at this point in time is that an A will be explained as an exemplary performance, B will be recognized, C will be acceptable, D will be in need of an improvement, and F will be considered unacceptable.
I have a maybe I missed it on the previous slide. When he said we're going back to the, going back to the old system with the A, B, C, D, and the F. So what's going to be the threshold as far as the numbers, as far as the cutoff? What constitutes an A, B, C, or D, or even an F?
Great question. So within each, each domain, we'll receive a letter rating. In addition, the campuses in the district will receive an overall rating. So you'll see that each campus will have four total ratings. One rating for each of the three domains plus an overall. Today, I'm going to be going over the student achievement domain, so I will tell you what the cut scores for that particular domain are. No problem. So the overall rating, let me talk a little bit about the overall rating. For district and campuses, will be determined by a weighted combination of the different domains. So while the closing the gaps domain is going to be weighted at 30% of the overall rating, the remaining 70% is actually going to be coming from either the student achievement domain or the school progress domain, as the better of the two will be included in the overall rating. So 70% is coming from either student achievement or school progress, and the other 30% will be coming from the closing the gaps domain. So let me get into the first domain, the student achievement domain. This domain is calculated, and I'm going to talk just specifically about our elementary, our junior highs, and our freshman campuses at this point in time. The TEA will be taking a look at three percentages. The percentage of students at the approaches grade level or above, the percent of students at the meets grade level or above, and the percent of students at the masters standard on their star test. TA will take the average of those three percentages. Whatever that average is then becomes the overall score for the student achievement domain. Right now, the commissioner has said that if that score is above a 60, then that would constitute an A. Currently, we do not have the cut scores for a B, C, D, or F. So the only cut score that we have is an A at this point in time for the student achievement domain.
When do you expect to get that?
They're currently in the process of finalizing all of the rules. We have been told within the next couple of weeks. They have said March, so hopefully we get it by the end of March, all of the finalized rules. Let me just give you a little bit of background information as to the why behind the 60. The Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board has a state plan that they have put in place called the 60 by 30 Texas State Plan. And what one of their goals is, is that by 2030, at least 60% of Texans between the ages of 25 and 34 will have a certificate or degree. So the commissioner has said that he wants to align with that higher ed board goal. And so a 60 for K-12, our accountability system for the student achievement domain, that's why he's equating that to an A. So just kind of the why behind, why 60 is considered an A. So if you take, if you think about the average of the three performance levels that I just talked about, that's, that's how the score is derived for our elementary schools, our junior highs, and our freshman schools. But for our main comprehensive high schools, along with early college high school in Coleman, they are taking that average of the three into consideration along with two other components. And those two other components are our graduation rates and our college career military readiness rates. So those three components pulled together will give our high schools their student achievement domain score. So I wanted to provide to you what constitutes being college career military ready. These are all of the different indicators that a student can, can achieve in order to be deemed college career military ready. This list has been greatly expanded upon from previous school years. Military ready is the first, this is the first year that we will have it included in our accountability system. So in terms of staying focused, what, what we as a school district are really staying focused and keeping our eye on the prizes is student achievement and growth. So we're working towards individual student growth because that's going to really impact what we're doing and, and show in our accountability results. The meets and masters level is absolutely crucial, especially because we're taking the average of the three different performance levels. It's not just about approaches any longer. College career military readiness, campuses are working really hard to ensure that students are college career and/or military ready. And then campuses are also looking at data just a little differently, where we're not looking at just the approaches level anymore, but we're constantly looking at the average of all three. Yes.
I've got a quick question. So if a student signs up at a college, per se, A&amp;M, and signs up as a cadet, does that not qualify for the enlisted in the United States Armed Forces type deal? Or is there, or is just one solid category, which is the United States Military, other four branches, or the Coast Guard, or?
Well, good question. So it is within the Armed Forces, and it actually is intent to enlist. And so college, our counselors are working really hard to try to capture those that are intending to enlist in the military or in the Armed Forces at a later point in time. So if those students who go off to college or are a cadet and they intend to enlist in the future, we, we could capture those students within our accountability system.
If a student was going through JROTC or ROTC at the university, they would not, they would get the college piece and the college readiness already. You wouldn't get both because they wouldn't get contracted at the university until upwards of their junior year when they attend their advanced camp. So that would be the one on the college side, but not on the military side.
Yeah, because if you get accepted to, if you were, you can't, I guess, out of high school as an officer, you wouldn't be able to check both boxes, but?
Right. And if they were to go to a military academy, they would still get the college side, even though knowing four years later, they're now contracted four years later to become an officer, but they would, they would receive credit on TSI or the college format side.
Thank you.
No problem. So students can receive, you know, any of the indicators listed on the college and career military readiness list. As long as they meet one of those criteria, they are deemed college career military ready in, in the eyes of our state accountability system, if that helps. Any other questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, district reports continue. 5C, Financial Update. Mrs. Moss, information's on page 103 of our packet.
Mr. Davis, important members, I have four items that I want to talk to you about this afternoon. We ended the month of February with $179 million in cash and short-term investments. This is an increase of $41 million over January for all funds. The first recapture payment for 1718 in the amount of $5.8 million was paid in the month of February. We have six more payments scheduled for this fiscal year. The final payment will be sent to the state on August 15th. That current scheduled amount total is $41.1 million. That will vary based on our average daily attendance. For the fiscal year 1819 budget progress, the 1819 budget development continues. The review of budget manager requests for non-salary expenditures is ongoing. And the second board budget workshop is scheduled for April 24th. The board will be provided soft estimates, best and worst-case scenarios, assumptions, and an update on board and superintendent priorities. Our Skyward software implementation, financial services continues to work with Skyward in the conversion process. The team meets weekly via conference with Skyward project managers and are working with programmers to meet the needs of the district. The team members are using Skyward's personal development centers to jumpstart training for the different modules to familiarize staff with the software. The conversion remains on schedule for July start in the new system. And the last item, financial services new position. Let me clarify that that's a repurposed position. It's an FTE that we already had for our federal funds accountant. It's been vacant for the year. We want to welcome to the MISD family Mr. Tony Kingman. He joins the financial services teams as budget coordinator. Mr. Kingman will assist our department in all aspects of budgeting, including all funds. He will work closely with campus and department managers to provide guidance and assistance in the budget process and work with the budget team as we move forward in establishing work systems related to the district.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Moss. Thanks for all your efforts. All right, district report continue with 5D, Innovation Update, System of Great Schools. Ms. Cale? Information's on page 105 of our Board Packet.
Good evening. We continue to move quickly. Midland on the Move is basically an understatement. Mr. Riddick was talking about the dust storm. I think we're full-blown in the middle of it and are starting to see the other side of it, and some exciting things are happening. You, you have your update, but some highlights that I want to take and share with you since the last board meeting is our call for quality, for call for quality schools. We're considering, we're continuing in the due diligence phase of that and are continuing conversations with several charter entities and looking forward to continued conversations with those and what we can do as far as improving options for our students across the district. We are also continuing in discussions with those as far as Senate Bill 1882 and exactly what those partnerships might look like. And TEA is assisting with us in those conversations, as well as Katamba, as they continue to advise us. We've also gone on several site visits that have been funded through the Transformation Zone Planning Grant. Some of those have been to Arizona to look at a whole-school model in Arizona. We've also gone to the Dallas area and actually visited a collegiate prep elementary. We took teachers, executive directors, and some principals on that visit with us. And they were very excited, and, and directors, and they were very excited about what they saw at the collegiate prep, and it really helped get a vision of some of the things that we want to do with Houston Elementary and what will happen that, there. Lisa Neighbors will be leading that charge, and she came away very excited from that meeting and just as full of ideas. And it's very exciting with what we have there. We also took a group on the same trip to a collegiate, to, excuse me, to see Code to the Future, which is a computer science program. The campus that we visited is in its first year of implementation, so there were some glitches and some, some things that you see when people are first implementing things, but it was very exciting about the possibilities and the language that kids were using in those classrooms. So we're going to continue due diligence with that, with Code to the Future.
What type of languages were they dealing with?
They start with Scratch in kindergarten, and then they go into Lego Robotics work, and they do Minecraft, Minecraft, and then Java. They actually, I believe, have fourth graders that are starting to learn Java. It's a very in-depth program. We also, on the same trip, which was quick, we took a group to see the young women's Irma Rangell High School in Dallas, which is a Young Women's Preparatory Network campus, which is a 6 through 12 STEM campus. And we took the director of CTE, a teacher, and a principal to see that campus. And, and I got to see that campus. This is a very exciting, what is happening with that campus and the language. We talked with students from 7th grade through 12th grader. And the language that those young ladies were using and their ability to publicly speak with us and not show their nerves was unbelievable. And it was very exciting as we toured that campus and to see the possibilities within that campus. As far as our partnership with TNTP, we still have ongoing work with HR. They're working closely with Mr. Bailey and with, with what they are doing in that regard. The K-12 Instructional Insight Survey will relaunch in mid-April with only the 12 campuses that we had initially targeted. So we will see pre and post results from that survey. As far as transformation team meetings, the school performance framework that we are designing for every school in the campus to be measured against will, will, is in its metrics phase. It's also in a major communications phase. Monica has done a great job of leading this and has essentially handed off a component of it to the campus executive directors who have visited with the principals. And now the principals are learning what the SPF means, what it will mean for their campus as far as creating a system of continuous improvement, and then how will we communicate that out further, as well as what are the possibilities of what it might look like. Another component is the K-12 Insight Survey that we are doing for parents, students, and campus staff. This survey is going to be integral as far as the school performance framework because the results from that will not only drive continuous improvement on the campuses and in the district, but it will be a component of measurement within the school performance framework that annually will give us a tool to see where our campuses are performing upon the metrics that we decide as a district. Midland on the Move Communications, we have, we spoke in front of the Texas Commission on Public Finance. Did I say that right? Public School Finance. And Rajiv, Mr. Riddick, Ms. Moss, and myself were able to go to Austin and, and visit with them about what we are doing in, in Midland and what Senate Bill 1882 means and what the possibilities are for us as a district. That was very exciting, and next month, we're, two weeks, we're going to talk to the Senate Education Commission about the same topic. As far as the Transformation Zone Planning Grant, we are full head-on, as you, as you noticed in some previous communication. We are trying to bring that one in. I would say we're probably in the third quarter right now, trying to, trying to bring that forward. And with, definitely with Houston, we've already activated the application process. And as of this morning, we had 130 students interested in attending Houston Elementary as a collegiate prep. We are activating enrollment for 6th graders at San Jacinto because we have some open seats available, some additional seats. Therefore, we've opened up an application process for San Jacinto citywide. That actually went live today. We've also hired through grant funds a project manager who is Melissa Ware. She's been hired and added to our staff, and I can tell you right now, she does not let any grass grow under her feet, and she has already been a huge benefit to the district. a huge benefit to the district. Additionally, the plan has been very exciting. We had a, Mr. Riddick and I had a phone call with the TEA the other day, and they complimented the progress that we're making on our, on the design of our plan for the Transformation Zone, and they spoke to the fact that we are the only district in the Transformation Zone Planning Grant, there are eight other, I think, eight other, either six or eight other districts, that we are the only ones that are doing a Transformation Zone that is district-wide. The other districts are looking at a set of campuses, and that's all they're doing. So the, the scope of what we're doing is actually, word for word from them, is exactly what we were looking for, which is, which is exciting, excuse me, because upon submission of the Transformation Zone Planning Grant, then we are hoping that funds will be expanded greatly so that we can put into place everything that we've been planning for through this potential grant. Additionally, another exciting component in that phone call was that TEA is stealing our artifacts, our tools that we are designing. We have a tracker where we keep, keep track of everything that we're doing in the Transformation Zone Planning Grant, and they're going to actually take it and send it to the other districts and tell them to use it. So again, we're providing them some resources and tools. The local accountability system pilot, Monica is still attending those meetings. They are beginning to go better as far as what we were looking for, as far as the district and what we can do, so that's, that's positive information.
Who came up with the tracker?
Actually Rajiv designed it.
Okay.
It's pretty simple. It's just an Excel spreadsheet with the dates, and it's project management 101, but it's been very useful.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you.
School portfolio review and management, we're moving down that process. We actually had Kelly, Evan Stein, Jeff Warner, myself, and Monica Hernandez attended through grant funds. We attended the Center for Reinventing Public Education Conference in San Antonio. We had national and state leaders there that told us what they are doing with their transfer, well, yes, their transformation of their cities for education. So it was very exciting. We had school leaders, we had city leaders, we had governmental leaders, we had community advocates, we had school board members. It was very exciting to hear their input, and then we were also able to visit several schools in San Antonio and take advantage of learning from those campuses about the processes they've put in place to transform. So that was exciting. And one of the people that was at that meeting, who unfortunately I didn't get to, to meet, his name is David Osborne. I don't know if you've heard Mr. Riddick or myself talk about the book Reinventing American Education. He is the author of that book, as well as five other books and various magazine publications, articles, and he called and connected through Rajiv the other day. Mr. Riddick and I had a phone conversation with him today, and he is, he works for the Progressive Policy Institute, and what he wants to do is he wants to come to Midland and hold a conference here in Midland and bring in state and national leaders and engage our community in a confirm, in a conversation about what transformation looks like. So that was very exciting today. So when Mr. Riddick tells you we're getting on the national radar, now you can understand how we may be getting on the national radar.
What is his timeframe for that? Did he share that at all?
He is going to get back with us by the end of this week, but we are, we requested fall for that to occur. The, the other actions that have taken since-
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
What did he, was there any, did he expand anything on the, on the governance part, work that we've done, or the more of the transformation part, or was there one part that he was more interested in?
Would you like to address that?
Yes, please. Thank you, Dr. Cale. So trustee, trustees, the focus of the conversation for him was the opportunity to bring all parties interested. So he went through a list and asked who were individuals that we would want to have to attend that particular conference and meeting. So it went from business and industry to government to post-secondary to teachers, to parents, to philanthropy, through community active groups here in the city to faith-based, and pulled a big swath of who could be a part of this work. His impetus to us was that we're one of few cities in the nation that's going after the work this way. The others have been New Orleans or Louisiana as a state, under the guidance of the government there to form a district, Washington DC, New York City, Denver, Indianapolis, Indiana, and Camden, New Jersey. That's it. And we're doing whole form, whole district reform and transformation, and his interest was you're, you're ahead, and we want to hear the stories of things that are occurring with you. So I have the book that's going to be coming, which is Reinventing America's Public Schools, so that you can see what his work has detailed. And all he's doing is detailing the work of what's been going on around the nation, and when you see that work, you'll see that's something we're doing, a school performance framework. We're ahead of that unlike any other district that's jumped into this for us, ahead of, I even think, where Denver was in their implementation and processes of building. I feel our team has launched that incredibly well, so much so that TEA keeps referencing that for us. And he talks through the, the work of the board, he talks through the work of local government and the school district, and how all of them have all come together at a great time, and he wants to start working to capitalize on getting this information out into the public from the national lens. So he wants to bring in what's occurred in all the places that I just mentioned and actions that we need to think through and take place and, and spread in regards to those efforts.
Thank you. Well, and I ask a question too, because, you know, it's important for the public, you know, our public, our community to hear what we're doing right and what we're not doing right, what we're trying to focus on, you know, as, as you're building something, there's always constructive criticism that can be taken, so that's what I'm looking for. So, thank you.
As we look toward actions that will come before the next board meeting, key communicators. I know most of you are aware that we used to have MISD key communicators. We are bringing that back. Jamie Owen is a key component of that, and between her office and mine, we will work together to set up those opportunities. We already have quite a group that have joined the key communicators and are excited about what we can do that. The first meeting will be on April twelfth in that morning, and we want to reignite the conversation with the community through this group to help with the things that we are doing and to get some positive information out. As we look for, I'm going to skip to the next one, which is the Transformation Zone Planning Grant, just so that you understand, we potentially have some other big visits coming up that will be through grant funds as well, and that is Indianapolis, which is one of the ones that Mr. Osborne has researched and written about in his book. Indianapolis has a partnership with an entity called Mind Trust, and through that they've created an innovation zone within their public school network system, and several of us will be going there to visit with them and see exactly what they're doing and get a vision of how we could incorporate that potentially into our district. Additionally, Denver, as you know, we've been trying to get to Denver for several months, and now that the snow season's over, maybe we can make a trip to get there and have an opportunity to look at everything that is, Denver's doing because they're one of the national leaders in school choice options. We've got a group that's going to El Paso to see Avid. It's actually San, San Jacinto group. We'll be going to see Avid in a middle school concept to see exactly what that looks like, and Mr. Horner and Ms. Bridges will be attending that with them. And then we have some groups that are attending an opportunity to see newcomer centers in action in Houston ISD and see what that looks like as a potential opportunity. When we go back to Call for Quality Schools potential partnerships, I want you to put five o'clock PM on your calendar for April seventeenth. At that time, we will have a meet and greet with potential partners before the board meeting for Call for Quality Schools. During that time, you'll have an opportunity to interact with some of our potential partners and just have a face-to-face greeting with them out, and we'll probably just do it out here in the foyer, so it won't be anyplace different. Then we can come into the board meeting with some exciting news about how we're going to move forward with the Transformation Zone. So that will be essentially the opportunity for us to announce partnerships and for you to agree on some of those that are requiring board agreement. Then we will look forward to official information from that. So it's going to be an exciting evening, and we're looking forward to the opportunity that we have from that. Through all of this, I'll go back to what Mr. Jones consent, yes ma'am?
Please.
Five o'clock, just right before the board meeting. Yes, ma'am. I'll go back to what Mr. Jones always says, to keep the main thing the main thing, we're always wanting the campuses to maintain a focus on the implementation of the academic process. That's what we're about, is doing what we can for the, for kids to move their education forward. So that's what we want to make sure we keep the focus on while we're doing all of, everything else. What's going on in the classroom is still first and foremost. Does anyone have any questions about anything?
I do, Mrs. Cale.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, for me, the Transforz, Transformation Zone Planning Grant, is that a state grant or a federal grant?
Federal grant, through the state.
Okay, so that's where I'm confused, because you mentioned eight, eight school districts out of Texas were picked, but it is a federal grant?
Administered through TEA, yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. We're very excited. We're excited about all the hard work that's going into this on Midland on the Move, and we're very appreciative of that and the enthusiasm and excitement which we all are all bringing to the task. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our last district report, facility update. Mr. Riggin? Information is on page 115.
Just want to, facility update before we get into the action items. Update the board a little bit about the activities and the work of the Facility Master Plan Committee. I believe we've shared some of that in the board notes, but it's, the committee continues to work hard. We've been working on a bi-weekly basis on meetings with the committee. We're having very good, active participation from our committee members. We continue to look at the items that are important to this district concerning growth, capacity, and we look at where we're growing and what we, what we might need, be needing in the district in the, in the future. We are, we are looking at our existing facilities. Every time we meet, we tour an existing secondary school, for example, and we, we look at the, behind the skin of that school to see how that school is currently serving us and how it's, may continue to serve us in the future. We are looking at, starting to look at, the committee is starting to look at programs right now, athletic facility needs, programs, extracurricular programs and their needs. And so this continue, the work of the committee continues. The process of this work is we're building knowledge within the committee. We are seeing that some of our committee members are, have almost already seen enough and wanting to move forward quickly, and, but we have a lot of, of information to, to give to this committee and synthesize the information that's received before we can bring a, any kind of report or action or request, report to bring to y'all for consideration. We are on task. We are proceeding, and the work of the committee is, is exciting. One of the things we did do, we got on a bus this last week, and we went to the big city of Rankin, Texas, and you kind of wondered why. Well, we toured their new facility, the Rankin Red Devil High School, and although it was a one-eight school, the purpose of us going to Rankin was to look at a new building that through a very dedicated efforts on their part, allowed their community to build a new high school to meet the needs of their community. And in that process, they used a lot of design concepts and building elements that were state-of-the-art innovative for their community, and it was important that we share with our committee examples of where other school districts are planning for their facilities. So we had twenty-two members of the committee that attended that bus tour, seven secondary principals, and it was, I, in my opinion, I thought it was a well worthwhile trip.
Any questions for Mr. Riggin?
No, not a question, just a comment. Tell those impatient types that we do appreciate that they recognize the urgency, because I don't think I'm alone on this board as knowing that we really do need to have facilities changed and better ASAP.
I believe you have several members of that committee that are, that are, do agree with you, yes?
Mr. Riggin, one of the things I enjoyed about the, the trip to Rankin was the fact that the superintendent and principal were both very open with us about mistakes they made and then the things they did well. And so it was kind of eye-opening to see how much planning they went into it, but he was very open with us. And the other thing that was kind of mind-boggling, because he started the conversation with, y'all are a chapter forty-one school, what do y'all give the state out of every dollar? And we said eighteen to twenty cents on the dollar, and they give ninety cents on the dollar. And I was just flabbergasted that they're giving ninety percent of their money to the state. So anyway, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Riggin will stay at the podium as we begin. Six A is proposed modifications to secondary attendance boundaries. Information begins on page 115 of our board packet.
Welcome, Board. It's our pleasure to bring today a recommendation from, from staff for your consideration to consider three boundary adjustments to level existing secondary membership to, to available building capacities. In your packet, there are four maps. Map one basically states the, the issues that we have with our existing capacities of our building along with the current memberships that attend those buildings. If we go to map two, map two, three, and four basically is the staff's recommendation to level boundaries to adjust membership where they would attend or assign to attend to buildings that, where we have capacity. In the process, we are looking at basically three boundary modifications of attendance areas, and with that process, we would like to move students closer to their, what they consider their neighborhood school, and we've got three areas of the city that we would recommend that we consider. The first area is the northwest part of town. We would look at the boot shape of L, it's, it's in red there. We would look at moving some tennis areas to the Abel School District. With that, we would move some programs from Abel and to Alamo, and then if, in the south, southwest part of town, our recommendation is to look at the Burnett Elementary Attendance Area in red there and move those, ask those sixth graders to begin attending the Alamo Junior High School Attendance Area, and we would also look at the attendance area that's to the far southwest part of the, of the district there to change membership or attendance to attend Abel, to attend the Alamo Attendance Area, which is closer to their neighborhood. With that, also, there's one administrative change that we'd like to make permanent, and that is the area, the Burnett Elementary School area. We would like to make that boundary area at Burnett permanent to attend the San Jacinto. That area has been modified for the last four years by administrative actions. So we're bringing today three modifications to boundaries to help balance memberships within the, the district. With this plan, we have submitted this, or this has been added to the district website for the last month or so, and we've been- for the last month or so, and we've been receiving comments from the public and answering their comments and questions. We've also, the first of March, on March the seventh and March the eighth, we held two committee, community meetings to submit this to the community and receive any questions or comments they would have. Through that process, we received approximately forty-seven questions and answers, we have shared that on the district webpage, and we also have a copy of that in front of y'all today on, on the table dais, for y'all's information. During those meetings, community meetings, there were several questions that came from the public and, and to the board, to the, to members of the board, is, in, for, for the most case, they liked what we were doing in some areas, they, they liked the fact that we were moving some boundary attendance areas to closer to their neighborhood school, and for the most part, we had some folks that liked that concept. And we had some questions that actually asked us, why couldn't we do more? Why couldn't we move more boundaries to, to allow them to attend their neighborhood, their neighborhood school and stop so much busing? With that, we've had some questions and comments and additional, additional questions from the board that allowed us as staff to come back and try to graphically illustrate those questions, and in, on the dais table in front of you, we've brought two additional maps to help address those questions, and if you, if you will bear with me, I will go through the answer to, our answer, staff answer to those questions, and if I could point to you to a map two A that would graphically represent. Again, the question came up, why couldn't we ask to move more boundaries so that we could attend our neighborhood school? So two A is trying to graphically show that we could add the membership around the Legends and all the way to the west, to the Mission Dorado area, and ask that we adjust those boundaries to attend Alamo and Luda de Goddard area, that is shown there in this map to be changed to, to gray. With that, we're looking at around two hundred and seven students in that area that we would add to Alamo. And again, these are just questions. We also, it was questioned, why couldn't we go to the far east side of the town and look at an area that is highlighted there, it's not a Coleman area, but it's got Coleman High School as an identifier on your map, and that is an area that's currently assigned to attend Alamo, but the question was, could that possibly, area possibly attend San Jacinto? And then, so we looked at those, and this, this sheet here shows that moving additional students around would decrease possibly more, or decrease busing across the city, and for the most part, the Abel, it works with the Abel numbers and it works with the Alamo numbers for the current capacity. It, it drops our, our capacity or membership at Goddard to allow us for extended growth in that area. The only concern that we would have, staff would have with this possible alternate plan would be San Jacinto, we see that we're pushing the limits of the capacity of that school. And one of the things that's come up, I'm going to, I'm going to point to San Jacinto, and there's a little asterisk there, because when we first started this process, we made the change to elect to put sixth grade students from Houston into San Jacinto and begin a sixth grade program at, at San Jacinto. And so we were looking at approximately sixty students. The program at San Jacinto, though, the educational program, and with this development of the concept of moving sixth grade into junior high school, has expanded a little bit program-wise, and for a program to succeed in that, staff believes we need to have an enrollment of between a hundred and a hundred and twenty students. So we're still using the sixty, just to keep numbers, not changing numbers on you, but we, we have changed some programs that we're, we are expecting to occur at S J. And so with the numbers that we know we will have and the additional numbers that we are expecting to attend S J, to move the Coleman area into S J, in our opinion, would, would not be productive for that school in the future. The other, I would then like to take you to a-
James.
Yes?
Go back to that statement, I think there needs to be some elaboration there. Why not positive productivity?
Well, if you look at the fact of the, the building capacity at, it's our smallest school is at San Jacinto, and the building capacity of that building, we estimate to be eight hundred and fifty students. Taking the, the area of Coleman, those two hundred and six students, and assigning them to San Jacinto, along with the program requirements that we're, we're looking at in the, in building the program for the sixth grade program at S J, we're going to be adding not, not only sixty students, but a possibly a hundred to a hundred and twenty students. So we would be stressing the capacity, in our opinion, the capacity of that building to over nine hundred students, nine hundred and sixty students in the next couple of years.
But we are doing, aren't we doing the same thing relative to Abel and Goddard?
We, we will continue because of growth, stress, stretching Goddard and stretching Abel, and on this map, with the growth, we would stretch Alamo also with growth. The campus that we have the least flexibility, though, for, for being able to handle expanded growth is San Jacinto. We have the facilities, the athletic facilities, the grounds, the access, parking are all very limited at San Jacinto, we just do not have the flexibility that we have at the other three campuses, campuses that does have larger land, land mass and building area.
Mr. Riggan?
I guess the question I have is like, we have at S J, the add, add east Alamo, the two hundred and six students, and the same thing at Goddard, as well as at Alamo? Okay, is that, is that, that's doubling numbers, if I'm reading it right, so you're telling me there's, on the east side of Alamo Boundary right now, there's two hundred and six students? Or is that actually half of that number?
The two hundred and six students is calculated by fifth and sixth grades. Is that what your question, yes?
That, yeah, I think that's what he's asking, and, and so the six ninety-eight, is that based on fifth and sixth graders, or is that-
Yes, this is, these numbers are all based on, on a two-year projection of adding fifth and sixth graders, that's how we're looking at that, is that, this may not be true numbers next year, but the next year, we anticipate these to be true numbers, because it's, it will be current, sixth graders are coming in the system and then the current fifth graders. We anticipate, though, that some of these numbers that are possibly seventh graders and, that will be in the system next year, will elect to, to, to change boundaries as, as to this, this plan. So we, we, we anticipate there will be some that will make the change even, even this next year.
So I guess to get a better understanding, again, at each one of these facilities that you're showing the two hundred plus numbers, at fifth and sixth graders, there, there's those many kids in the fifth and sixth grade at each one of those campuses?
Yes, yes, if that, if, for instance, if you looked on the west side of town, there in that red area that goes from Legends all the way out to Mission Dorado, there are two hundred and seven fifth and sixth grade students in that area currently.
Okay, so by moving those students from, from Goddard and going to S J, you said you think those, that would be too much stress on, on Alamo?
Well, we're recommending that those two hundred, we're not recommending, this is just to answer a question that has been asked us to look at graphically, and we, we would say you could move those two hundred and seven students in that assigned area to Alamo. You could, but, but you'd also have to look to the possibly south side or west, east side over there and look at that Coleman area, and that's kind of a wash, if you, if you put the Coleman, assign those Coleman area children to attend San Jacinto, there's two hundred and six students there, that's kind of a wash, so it makes a negative number or just a wash there. At this, then you would go back to the original plan that we talked about, moving the Burnett Elementary students and the students south of I twenty into Alamo, and that's where you basically get your increase of student enrollment there.
How many students at Goddard right now?
Currently, there are twelve hundred and sixteen as, as this date of the twenty-eighth in, in November of ten twenty.
So you're saying those are the students in, in the building right now?
Yes.
I thought you just told, because I, I just misunderstood you to say that that was the fifth and sixth graders that would be in the building in two years.
No, the, up there at Goddard, if you look at the twenty seventeen, eighteen membership, the current membership is twelve sixteen-
Okay.
As of ten twenty.
Okay, so my question was the six ninety-eight that's in San Jacinto, that is a current number, or that's fifth and sixth graders coming?
That is a current number, as of ten twenty.
Okay, so that, then that makes sense to me, that we've got six ninety-eight, we're going to add a hundred probably for the, for the next-
That's the asterisk on the sixty, but I kept sixty in there because that's the numbers we were talking about when we started this process, but I do want to put a footnote on there that because of the program enhancements or expectations of the program, those, those numbers are expected to be not sixty, but approximately a hundred to a hundred and twenty.
Okay, and do you know in that Coleman area that's surrounded in red?
Yes.
How many kids in that area right now attend Alamo Junior High School?
Those are, those are the two hundred and six students that are there.
Those are the fifth and sixth graders coming, but how many right now are there that are going to Alamo? Because two hundred and six is a two-year number, everything else on this sheet is a one-year number, if I understand what you just told me.
I would have to, I would have to say that you're looking, you're asking me how many seventh and eighth graders are in that area.
Right.
I, I do not have that number right here, but I'm, I would guess that it's very close to two hundred, to two hundred and six, the same, same, same number.
Yeah, but, but two hundred and six on this other map that you gave us, area eleven says a hundred and twelve fifth graders and ninety-four sixth graders, that's two years. And everything on this map talks about where we are right now, today.
Yes.
And so you can't add two hundred and six because that's two years, so if we're going to add one year, I understand, say let's add a hundred kids, so then that, take a hundred off, that gets us to eight sixty-four, and I think Mr. Fuller says, that's not too overcrowded compared to what we got going on at Goddard and Abel.
Yes.
And so I don't understand why we throw two hundred and six number in, because it ought to be, I mean, two hundred and six in two years is what it's going to be-
Yes.
But it's not what it is now.
And you can, and you can look at it that way for next year, yes. We have, I, I believe we, we need to also look at it at the next year also.
Well, I agree, and I, but I think nowhere on this map do we show what's coming from three forty-nine going to Goddard, because that's going to be a big number.
You're exactly right, the whole point of this exercise is to move some of the stars around to get more, most of the stars, the development areas that are shown as stars in this plan are, are in the existing Goddard area, so the purpose of this act, process was to place addition, some of the stars in, in other, other, other attendance, other attendance areas of other junior high schools. And if we go back to the map number one, showing our existing conditions, I believe we, we will see that we're at capacity right now, so any future growth, and we are expecting growth, will have an impact on, on, on our schools, yes.
But as I was asking, Mr. Riddick, James, are we saying to the community, regardless of what plan we might adopt, that these plans are temporary, given what the Facilities Committee is working on now, and of course, speed, I suppose, has something to do with how soon, if at all, we secure the green light to build additional schools? Does that make these plans temporary?
We are currently at capacity at our junior high schools, and these plans are trying to level our current, level our current.
I understand that.
We are going to have, we are going to continue to see growth, that growth is going to continue to affect Goddard, it's going to continue to affect Abel, and it's, and we, you know, it's going to continue to affect Alamo with some of the, some of this move. So I guess you could define this as temporary until the point in time where new developments come in and exceed our capacity with our portable buildings, yes.
Is it, is it fair to say that part of the rationale for doing a two-year look forward is that hopefully, with the work of the Facilities Committee that's ongoing now, the work that comes out of that, and hopefully the opportunity for the community to tell us what they want, that hopefully we'll know more in two years, what our future options may be?
That is, that is the plan of the Facility Committee is to look at the growth capacity and what we currently have, to see what we need in the future, and so this, in that, in that identifier, this is temporary until we know what we're going to do on the long-range plan.
Mr. Davis, I, to answer your question, we've seen the numbers and we can't manage what's coming as it is now, it's not possible with the numbers in our system right now, temporary fix or not, and I, and I know the question was asked by a committee member, why are we waiting, why aren't we going forward? We, we have to get the due diligence done to make sure we have all the facts so we can sell it to our community, but this is going to be an explosion. It's already happened to our elementaries, we already filled up the new ones, and the middle schools and freshman schools and high schools cannot take what's coming, it's just, it's very obvious.
I would agree with that statement.
Yeah, and I was going to kind of say some of the same things, there is no perfect plan, I mean, we can take fifty students here and a hundred students there and move them around, but when you're full, you're full, and so we just have to do the best we can.
We are at capacity at our, our junior high schools right now, we have some capacity at our freshman schools, we are, we are near capacity at our high schools right now, and so any growth that we receive in the next two to three to four years is going to tax all our facilities, on the secondary.
And to, to answer, a, a second part of this question is, you're absolutely right, they're all going to be overcrowded. The, the, the part of the thing that makes sense to me about looking at these two changes is the amount of busing going across town, sending these kids from out here in the legacy area, about by Grandi Stadium is the easiest way to describe it, sending them in buses to get to Goddard, taking these kids that are in this little Coleman area that live right there by S J and putting them on roads and getting them all the way around to the other side of town to go to Alamo, and I, not only is there a safety issue, but there's also a, a financial issue of us putting people in buses and moving them across town, and I just, that's why I think it makes sense to, to consider these two more than, and, than what we've just had here.
Again, reason, because of the questions that we've received in, in the community meetings, questions that were raised to the board and to us, that's what drove this graphic representation of what some of the questions were, and why can't we do this, and that's what this, this map is intending to do, to show you that.
Mr. Murray, are you, are you supporting the entirety of what's shown here, including the, the, the area in red around Coleman High, or everything but that?
I, I am, because I don't think the two hundred and six number is correct, I think that number should be a hundred, and I think the sixty ought to be a hundred, and so I think you're looking at about eight hundred and seventy students being there, which would be twenty over the current, what we say is capacity.
In year one?
In year one, but we're, but we're going to kick some kids out, but I guarantee you in year two, if you're, if we're going to look at year two, none of these other schools are even going to be close, so everybody's going to have a problem, because three forty-nine, we know what exploded out there, and those kids are going to need to go to Goddard, that's the closest to their neighborhood school, and they're going to, there's going to, there's bigger numbers there than what we're creating available space at Goddard by moving only a hundred kids out, a hundred and thirty-three kids- A hundred and thirty-three kids out from the Henderson area.
When, Mr. Riddick, one of my concerns is that, so how does that transition happen for the students who are sixth graders? They're going to be transitioning to a junior high. Is there, are we taking the faculty over there? Or how's that, how's that going to transpire as far as meeting their needs at the sixth grade level in the junior high?
Let me let, let Mr. Horner, who oversees secondary schools, provide that feedback because it was something we jumped on right away. Because in this next year for SJ, it will be taking on fifth and sixth graders. So you're in essence bringing two-thirds of the campus needs to understand what that dynamic is like, Mr. Horner.
So for those that are affected by any boundary change, we have, we have, we are waiting until we actually get the board decision on whatever recommendations out there, just so we don't confuse parents and students. However, we've done this before where we've moved the Burnett areas to San Jacinto from Abel or from Goddard. And what we will do is we will hold special invitation, you know, events just for those students transitioning. So we will have those, whatever that number is, sixty to a hundred kids to whatever it is, the final number is, we will hold events just for those students where they're able to see the programs that are available at that campus and actually go through registration and make sure that we give them ever access to all of our programs that all of our students that are already in that system are going to have access to.
I'd like to move that we accept the secondary bounding changes that they've recommended. And we need to rely on our staff and administration. They know what's best. They're involved every day. And I think I, I move that we adopt the plan as presented.
So, so we're moving the fifth and sixth to San Jacinto?
Wait, 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 first, let me hold that question. There's a motion pending. Is there a second? All right, now, go.
So we're moving fifth and sixth to San Jacinto?
So we, we have a plan, and I understand Mr. Murray's concerns on the, you know, one, one grade level or two. But what I would like to elaborate, just a few things. So with sixth grade only at San, San Jacinto, with the Sam Houston plan, we have sixty sixth graders at Sam Houston, sixty fifth graders that will be sixth graders next year. So there are sixty sixth graders potentially next year from that group. And to give a full instructional program, we are targeting a hundred, a hundred and twenty sixth graders. So that's this year's fifth grade class. So we're taking, so the grade levels at San Jacinto and that model will be six, seven, eight in a middle school type model.
So in, in that model, move with partnership of Sam Houston and its conversion into an early college preparatory model, it will be a pre-K five. So for the first year, SJ will take fifth and sixth graders. So its sixth grade will move into the seventh, the fifth will move into sixth. And then from that point on, Sam Houston will be a pre-K five, and then SJ will have its full implementation of a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. But for one year, they will take two grade levels from Sam Houston.
Okay.
So fifth, so fifth and sixth will attend?
Well, for one year, it will, so.
Students that are currently in fifth grade at Sam Houston will be sixth graders at San Jacinto next year.
And sixth graders will be the seventh grade class.
I said, okay, okay.
And if I may just elaborate on Mr. Murray's concerns, I, just going back to San Jacinto. So when you look at that model, and, and I'd be glad to share this actual data, looking at the students that are enrolled sitting today, the pure rollover, if you rolled over just sixth grade and seventh grade, along with the newcomer program at San Jacinto, next year's enrollment is projected eight twenty-three at San Jacinto. That's with the hundred and twenty sixth graders sitting there. In the model that we're looking at, we're expecting those sixty students that are out of attendance zone in seventh grade in two years to stay. And again, the sixty and eighth grade in two years to stay. So that projected number is at eight hundred and seventy-nine in nineteen twenty at, with, with the proposals that we have recommended initially. So eight seventy-nine, that's a minimal, that is not a boundary change to San Jacinto. So if you were to consider an additional boundary change from the Coleman area, you would be talking over a thousand kids based on that information. And I, I'll bring this to you.
Okay, so here's my question, because I, I, I take a little bit of offense to the motion as it was made that we rely on our staff and, and we don't need to think outside the box because I asked about this information last Thursday. And I'm looking at my email. We received an email with this map for the first time at two forty-nine today. Two forty-nine, that gives us not even three hours to prepare to ask questions about this. And so that is absolutely not right for us to make this kind of major decision when, when the district could save a ton of money on busing and what's going on in that area. And, and I read on here, and, and I don't bring this up because I have a personal need for it. I attended both meetings. I had people come to me, Mr. Bishop did as well, saying, and, and I think question twenty-three on our community questions page, this lady's driving fifty miles per day to get across town to school. That makes no sense. And so in a town that we have already major traffic congestion, and it's going to get worse because we're just growing, that while we haven't at least considered this earlier, and I appreciate your numbers because they sound, they sound good. If I would have known that Thursday, I probably would have got a lot more rest and my blood pressure wouldn't be as high as it is right now. But my point is, there, there were, there are some real reasons to look at this and for it to just to be discussed at this late point in time. I, I, I'm sorry, I'm upset about that.
Let me, let me ask this. Without regard to the numbers in years one and two and getting bogged down into all those details, although there are, I'm not, they're all crude, critical and important. Can you tell us in, in a, I guess a summary fashion, why you, the staff did not recommend map two A in general terms?
If, if I may take that one, Mr. Reagan. So two A is the one that both moves Coleman and the, the Legends all the way
Yes.
to Exeter County. So the, the Alamo side of that, Alamo does have close to capacity to be able to handle that. The San Jacinto side, literally that will put it, when you look at the movement of sixth graders, that will put San, San Jacinto at over a thousand students in two years. Not next year, but in the two-year process. When you add the sixth graders that are continuing to stay. Because that two hundred students going to San Jacinto is not, is not a feasible number. If we didn't include the sixth graders in that conversation, it would be, it would be a feasible conversation, absolutely. The Legends area, that was a discussion item. Quite simply Henderson is closer. And it was just, it puts, it puts Alamo in two years at, in nineteen twenty, the Legend, what we proposed puts them right at a thousand. So if you were to add another thirty, you're talking about close to eleven hundred. So it was just a matter of how much over you want to get. And, you know, the, the truth is, this is really a two-year, at most a three-year plan to keep, to keep them from getting over, Goddard from getting over fourteen hundred kids in, in two years. Because right, right now, Goddard in their city in attendance zone has seven hundred and seventy-one students. So, you know, obviously we know we need to address Goddard. The Legends area is a feasible conversation. And it's slightly more, but it puts, it puts the, it puts Alamo at that twelve hundred, eleven hundred number within three years really quickly, so.
So when you're saying Legends, are you also speaking of the, the Legacy?
Legends, Legacy all the way to two fifth, yes, sir.
Okay, so this, this plan two A has, has the staff, maybe I missed it. Has the staff had a chance to look at the maps on this two A?
No, this, this two A, based on the comments and questions that we received in the last week or so, these maps were developed specifically for, to, to put graphically down the discussions that were occurring, questions that were occurring.
So again, so the staff had not a chance?
The staff or public, we've not shared any of this with, with anybody, no.
I mean, so I guess my question is for me, if, if we're saying we're going to be transparent and give people an opportunity to voice on maps that's being put before the community, I think it's only fair, speaking on my behalf, to let the people out of Legends and Legacy have some input on this two A, on where it fit the criteria for them as well.
I think your, I think your point is well made in that we ask for questions, which serve as a catalyst, obviously, for this map and others. And I agree. If we don't allow the response to come from those areas impacted by the question and subsequently the map, we won't be in essence as transparent as we ought to be.
Well, we would, we would definitely agree with that. If, if, if the board wants to proceed with this change, we would definitely want to go back to the community and share this, this change with the community and have additional community meetings to share this plan and get their input so we can share that with, back with the board and to allow the board to make a decision that they feel, you feel, would be most beneficial for the community.
And, and we can do that so that there's not, so we can be very transparent. One of the things that puts our strategy into a quandary is a conversion of SJ into a full middle school six, seven, eight. Because now we would not deny the Coleman area students the opportunity to not go to SJ as a sixth grade. If we're going to convert it into a six, seven, eight, we would, I would prefer not to say Sam Houston is the only group as well as the other sixty-plus students that could fill that grade level to get that opportunity. That would then start to create choice or magnet and application and lottery to see if that occurs. So we, we can take multiple plans forward, and we've got some great feedback, both out of community meetings and from trustees. Apologize that this did not get to you earlier. That was not the intent. And we can put these options forward. And we've talked with the Alamo and the Abel community, excuse me, SJ community. We can then go again and go into the next impacted communities that we're sharing to take the full breadth of plan and strategy out there and get feedback from that and present it. There is not an urgency yet today to move forward for approval. There will become a sense of urgency once we get to May so that we can begin to strategize our entire plan moving forward. And it could have a compilation of things that come forward. We presented what is the administration's recommendation. We've taken feedback and now have board, a board recommendation. And we can then take both these plans and, and present them to our community and then come back to our board. April would be pretty tight, but no later than the April, the May meeting to bring our feedback and say, here's what we gathered during that time communicating all along the way.
So you're saying we can't, we can implement it, not approving it tonight, not, not?
I would, I would say to table.
Table it.
And then let us go and get feedback based on this new plan.
I withdraw my motion.
But I'm confused.
That you what?
I'm confused. Mr. Horner, didn't you say, didn't you address why two A was not the recommendation of staff? So there has been time for staff to look at this?
Knowing, knowing what we've already looked at with map one, two A was a pretty easy, easy thing to look at, San Jacinto not being feasible. I would say I think there is a lot of merit to the Legends, Legends East or Legends West area. There's a lot of merit. And quite honestly, it's more aggressive, and I appreciate the board giving us direction on being a little bit more aggressive with more moves because that will, it, it is feasible that that could be a more students off of Goddard's plate quicker. I would, you know, like, I, I, I could say that's at a glance, you know. I'd like to really look at the numbers class by class like I have with the first proposal and make sure that we're not just switching the problem to give, you know, Alamo thirteen hundred kids in, in two years, so.
Okay, thank you.
I also think, and I appreciate that, but again, I think the options there, at least, if, if the numbers don't fit, at least the people in that community would be able to see that versus us just telling them it won't work. I think that's the transparency part.
I agree. All right, so Mr. Kennedy has withdrawn his motion. I believe that nullifies your second. You may, you are free to make your own motion if you'd like. And anyone else seeing none, then we'll consider that matter tabled until next month. And we'll, all of us will study this matter further. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Action item six B, CE Local. Ms. Robertson?
Good evening, Board. And CE Local shows our fiscal year. It is the only policy that specifically lays out our current fiscal year, which is currently September one ending August thirty-one. However, we are moving to July one and ending June thirtieth. So we're asking that y'all approve this policy change so we can be in compliance with our new plan.
Motion by Ms. Nicholson, second by Mr. Kennedy. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next action item, six C, DED Local. Ms. Robertson?
For DED Local is our policy about vacation days, and that's for employees who work for two thirty-six days or more. And this policy is broken down into people who work eleven months versus all year. And what we need to do here is take out some of the language that limits employees who work less than two hundred and fifty-five days to rolling over only five days. This is another implication of our changing fiscal years. This will just really allow the people who are working two thirty-six days to ensure that they can roll over all of their days. An example is typically central office administrators take their ten days of vacation in July. Well, with our new fiscal year and with the way the policy is currently written, when we hit that July one date, those administrators would only be able to roll over five days. Well, then that means they lost the five they haven't gotten to take because we haven't gotten to summer yet. And so it's just kind of a technicality with this fiscal year change. And so nobody is getting extra days or anything like that. It's just allowing people to take the days when they normally would and just to kind of get us in this new cycle of a new fiscal change.
I move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Marquez, second by Mr. Murray. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully we are catching all of these things that we're, as we're working through the fiscal year change, we'll, we'll just bring them to you as we come across and as we're going through the process. And, but I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Davis.
All right. Action item sixty, Chamber of Commerce, Use of Public Funds Resolution.
Typically, the superintendent is a member of the chamber as well as the district. And we typically have the board and administrative staff go to chamber events. And this resolution is just to put clearly in policy that you all believe that's a good use of public funds. And it also puts a limit of ten thousand dollars that can be used without further board approval. And so we are asking for permission to do that.
So I move.
Motion by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Marquez. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. And last action item, six E, Authorization to Offer Twenty Unassigned Teacher Contracts for two thousand eighteen nineteen. Mr. Bailey?
Well, good evening, Board members. Good news is that we're not coming for sanctions tonight.
Good.
Item number six E requests your authorization to offer up to twenty unassigned teacher contracts for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen contract year. Historically, Midland ISD has hired three hundred new teachers on average each year. And based upon conservative projections, we will present approximately thirty new teaching positions for your approval in this new fiscal year budget. The request tonight will allow us the opportunity to optimize hiring when more qualified candidates are in the applicant pool and actually looking for teaching positions. In the attachment that we included in your packet, you will notice that most applications are received between late April through mid-June. And you will notice in the second graphic that most of our certified teachers are hired in June. This year, in cooperation with our finance department, we have been able to move the staffing projections process earlier and allow principals to begin planning their staffing for next year. And we also held two non-traditional recruitment events, had, have a job fair schedule for April the twenty eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Our team, our HR team is out on a recruiting trail this month into mid-April, making twenty-five recruitment visits to colleges and universities across making 25 recruitment visits to colleges and universities across the state. And while we're out recruiting, we often come across highly qualified and well-sought-after candidates. And our practice in the past has been to give these exceptional candidates just a letter of intent to hire, and many would accept and anticipate a job offer from a campus administrator. However, by offering these exceptional candidates a contract, we can move forward with the necessary process and have them sign a contract while a specific campus assignment is determined. We believe that this will be another tool to assist us in meet, and assist us in meeting our goal of being 100% fully staffed on the first day of school. That's our recommendation.
Why are you only seeking authorization for 20?
Well, we believe that 20 is a number that we can use on a rotating scale. Uh, we have 25 visits, and of course, we do communicate with principals while we're on the recruitment, um, schedule. We're sending text messages, we're emailing resumes. So there are some of those candidates that we believe we can move on fairly quickly. But as positions, as we're waiting on resignations and as we're waiting on retirement notices, some, we can already have these 20 that we can begin to utilize. Um, this, we're coming with 20 this year, we'll see how it goes. Maybe next year, we'll ask for more.
So it's just basically to say, for sure, you got a guaranteed spot in the MISD?
Yes. Unassigned.
Okay.
20's all you want?
20 was, 20 started the discussion. I would say we need to be upwards of 50 to, I would probably not go over 100, but 50 to the 100 range is what we need. Uh, knowing that we have vacancies that are occurring, uh, now, these are for high-quality candidates that we've come across. That, um, young lady, as a matter of fact, from the Midland area, went to Ohio, Oklahoma State, has a master's in reading, wants to return to Midland. She knows the community, she grew up in the community, she went to school in the community, and she has a master's in reading, uh, prepared through the university. That sounds to me like a high-quality candidate, that I would offer one of these contracts to. And so it's finding those individuals that are out there. But I would tell you, I would take the number to 50. And then let the team not, those are golden, and let the team then determine what those are. We know that if we don't get to 50, we don't get to 50. But if we have that, then we, if we get beyond that, then we can certainly come back to the board.
Ms. Robertson, I guess since this was only posted for 20, we cannot increase that tonight if we wanted to? Even if we wanted to?
Correct, we, we can definitely bring this back in.
Oh, no, no, well, we, we can, I assume that we can approve this 20 tonight, and hopefully see and entertain and consider next month another additional amount over the 20.
Yes, sir.
Because you're gonna be recruiting March through May, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. This is an action item.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Murray. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you, Godspeed, Mr. Bailey. Hope to see you next month. All right, it is, uh, 7:23 PM, and we will go into closed session in accordance with Government Code Sections 55.071 through 074, 551.076, 551.0821 through .084. Thank you all for coming, appreciate your attendance this evening. The time is 9:12 PM, and we are merging from closed session. There is no action arising from closed session, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much.